Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 2nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
We have four selectmen present, as well as the town administrator.
Mr. Bowen will not be with us this evening. I will ask Mr. Rose, please, to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just want to say that because there are so many of us in this room, I ask that we will all keep a mask on unless you are uncomfortable when you come to the line. We know that there are new cases in town, and you have the variant, and I, for one, am not willing to risk my life for any reason, to be honest with you. Okay, announcements. Mr. Slaven.
I'll wait till Jim gets to sit down.
Yeah. The record should note that Mr. Manese is here.
Mr. Manese.
So note two.
701. Thank you. Okay. As far as announcements today, all I have is tomorrow is election day. It's extremely important. People take the advantage that people actually vote for someone. We're in a lot of countries that can't vote. If you live in Ukraine, you're lucky you could survive a day without bombing. It's very discouraging when people don't come out and vote, and we get less than 10% at a good time. And again, it's a privilege. It's an honor. You put people in place. It's a town government. You have more control than anywhere else, so take advantage of it. Please come out and vote.
You're also, Mr. Manese, announcements, sir?
Come over to Dave's guy. Give me a second here. What are you saying?
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, just to dovetail on what Alan said, the polling places are as follows. Right here in Town Hall are precincts two and, no, one and six. One and six are here. Two and three are at the Wareham School in Onset, and four and five are at the Redmond Hall in West Wareham across from the Deacon School. They're open from 8:00 a.m. to late p.m., so you can hit them before work or hit them after work. They'll be there waiting for you.
Thank you. Did you ask him to read this?
He's gonna read. Also, we have, I'm gonna have Peter read something into the record we need to get on.
Okay. Mr. Manese, announcements?
Yeah, tomorrow, go vote. Vote for whomever, just vote. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we do have an announcement which the sewer commissioners have asked us to read into the record, and Mr. Titlebaum is going to stun you with how fast he can read.
No, this one people need to hear.
Yes.
This isn't just some election, you know, calling an election or something.
I believe it's also. It's also on the town website.
It's from the Board of Sewer Commissioners. Wareham Water Pollution Control Facility, Six Tony's Lane, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Memorandum to Derek Sullivan, Town Administrator, from James Gibberdy, Chairman of Board of Sewer Commissioners. Subject: Moratorium. Date: April 29th, 2022. C.C. to us, Town Council, Wareham Water District, Onset Water District, and also the Board and Select Board. At the April 29th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Sewer Commissioners, a GHD 24 September 2020 memorandum entitled "Draft Memorandum of Capacity at the Wareham Water Pollution Control Facility" and updated April 2022 was discussed. The document was presented by Russ Kleecamp, an engineer from GHD. The memorandum covered the high-peak influent flow that the plant has been experiencing, as well as the committed allocations and permit discharge restrictions for the facility. This document is attached. This is a draft copy, and the final will be available next week. With all allocations and present flows considered, it was determined that we are in excess of our 80% allowance. The recommendation of GHD, the engineering firm, based on their findings, was to not allow any new flow to the system. This means no new building hookups, as well as no additions to existing structures that would increase flow. We are continuing efforts to expand discharge capacity through potential groundwater discharge, attempting to acquire federal approval to increase our discharge to the Agawam River, continuing to explore the feasibility of discharge to the canal, as well as standalone treatment plants for select neighborhoods. Until one or more of these options materialize, we have no other option but to institute this moratorium effective immediately and begin a queue for future hookups.
Thank you.
So that's pretty significant news.
It is. Okay, I don't, did I ask you for board comments?
No.
Board comments?
No.
Thank you.
I thought you were afraid of what I was gonna say.
Board comments? Mr. Slaven?
First off, we have a holiday coming up, Sacred Delisle. Hope everybody has a good time. Visit our Mexican restaurants in town, there's quite a few now. Be careful how much liquor you actually drink, though. The other pieces we have right now on the books, up until July 15th, Zoom is allowed by the state companies for how the meetings can work, et cetera. There are a couple bills pending that may or may not change that to allow us to extend past that. The change in the elections coming up, I'm not sure what will happen after that, as to whether or not the Zoom meetings continue into the Board of Selectmen and other committees. But basically, they can do it until July 15th. If it does extend past that, my real concern is that, well, the WCTV, with the amount of actual people they have, and other issues right now, can actually handle that. So I don't know how this is gonna work out, but please don't go and make life difficult for all of us, saying we're not doing what we're supposed to do, always said we could try and do. We're really at a very difficult time right now trying to make this work, and the state government's not helping. And that should do it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Manese?
I'll piggyback off of that. We passed, I believe, a local bylaw which says our adjudicatory boards will hold hybrid meetings. So that's three or four of our boards. Those should continue, and if they're not happening now, we should try to make sure that it is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. I can tell you that they are happening. Tomorrow, we will be remote, back to remote. The only reason I'm doing live tonight will become evident at the end of the meeting. I get to have a little bit of fun. Mr. Titlebaum, comments?
No, I'm frightened.
Good, you should be.
You know, I'll pass.
Thank you. Mr. Tarbiano?
Nope.
Thank you. Next would go to appointments. Ms. Corbett and Ms. Dyer, would you like to come forward, or all of you who are representing the library?
Let the record deflect that Mel and I were both over at the other room, having forgotten that it was here.
But there was a sign on the door, right?
Yeah. Treat your habit.
Yeah, but do you see this in the great big huge, double-bolled, triple-sized, come on, guys?
I actually didn't look at it.
Okay. Good evening. We have before Sarah Corbett, who is interested in being on the library trustees, and Ms. Corbett, if you would choose to address the board, that would be great.
Is it on?
Yes.
Yep, you can pull it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, pull it right toward you, please. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. When I first moved to town about 20, 25 years ago, I was really impressed with the library, and I thought any town who built a library like that had its priorities straight. And just recently, I've been looking around for ways to get back involved in town. I was very involved, and then got busy with working kids. And I'm still working, but the kids are doing well on their own, so I wanted to get involved in the town again, and I actually saw you, Judy, reach out for library trustees. I watch you guys every night, big fan every Tuesday night. And so I just thought that was a great opportunity, because I love the library so much, so I'd love to be a trustee.
Thank you. I know the Board of Trustees voted to recommend you, and I know that you've been to meetings. Do any of you gentlemen have any questions of this young lady? Mr. Slaven?
Just thank you for stepping up. And Nancy, it's nice to see you. It's been a while.
Thank you. Mr. Manese, any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So I'm so glad that we hooked Sam back in, and you seem to have come along with him, so that's awesome. And I know this, these are two great people, I gotta tell you. I've known them for years and years, and they're terrific folks, and we couldn't have better people in good places. So, and that, I will move.
Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions. I've certainly seen the recommendation, and I know that Corbett's got you through the town, so thanks for stepping up.
Thank you. And your motion is?
I'm not ready.
Oh. Do you have any questions of us?
See, it's the last, I only have two nights left, so I can, you know, I can do just about anything at this point. I move that we-
Can I just ask one more question?
Oh, okay.
Well, no, you interrupted me. I get to interrupt you. It's kind of like, you know, the Mutton Jeff Show.
I'm ready. Go for it.
You now will have how many openings, Ms. Dyer, as of June 30th? Because I know that's been a concern for you and your board.
Yes, so as of June 30th-
Into one of the mics, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. So as of June 30th, two of us will be stepping down. I will be, because my term will have expired by that point in time. Joanne Robertson has too many work commitments at this point, so as her term ends, she's not gonna reapply. Nancy will be reapplying, fortunately, so Nancy, Marky, Holly, Deanne, Sarah, that's it. So we will still have four spaces open.
Okay, thank you. And we will be, those are posted on the town website. They also are in the newspaper for a two-week period of advertising, along with all of the other openings that we have.
Thank you.
You will.
And we are actively recruiting. There's information everywhere.
We know.
Thank you.
Yep. And now it's your turn. Go ahead.
Oh, you ready for me?
Sure, why not?
All right. I move that we appoint Sarah Corbett of Ford Jonathan Lane, Wareham, Mass., to the Wareham Library Trustees for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, standing. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
It's the year after they're supposed to start the bridge constructions, which is supposed to start in 2024.
And your paperwork probably won't be ready until Thursday in the Board of Selectmen's office, which is the other end of the hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Burbank with us this evening? Nice to see you again. Do you choose to address us?
I have nothing to add other than my time.
Okay, why don't you just step forward, because we can't hear you from back there.
Can you do me a favor and push your microphone farther away from you?
Oh, yes, I can.
Thank you.
We need to sign that. Okay. Good evening. We have the renewal of the fortune teller's license under the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 185 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Last year, Ms. Burbank applied for one of these, and we didn't know how to do it, so we created one, and I think we charged you $2.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Okay. And now you're here for a renewal. Is there anything that you'd like to say to us?
Thank you for this opportunity again. I really appreciate this forum to serve, and usher in a spirit of adoption spirit. And I do not solicit or accept in-person visits. If anybody would like to contact me to play their cards, they can reach me at warehamslicensfortune teller@gmail.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of you gentlemen have any questions of the young lady? Mr. Slaven, Mr. Manese?
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Titlebaum?
No questions, but I'm glad you're back again.
Thank you. Me too.
And you, Mr. Titlebaum?
No, I have no questions. I move that we approve the fortune teller license for Castrina, Christina?
Christine.
Christina. I'll get that out, don't worry. Lisa Burbank, for a fortune teller's license to expire December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. It is unanimous. I believe your license will be ready for you on Thursday at the other end of the hall.
Thank you.
Thank you, and enjoy your evening.
You too.
Nice to see you.
You too.
Okay, we, go ahead.
Next is review, discussion, and possible vote regarding the concept drawings for the renovation of Bayview Park. Where's the game? There they are.
Let's go light, just, I think, so TV can pick up on it maybe?
We'll let them, yeah.
There we go.
Turn them on for, until, yeah. Okay. So, Ms. Buckminster, you're going to introduce everyone who is with you this evening, please?
I will.
And you have given us each a packet, and there's some extra packets up here at the front table, if anybody's interested in having one in the audience.
Draw the board members like this.
Those of us who want them, yeah.
Yeah, you have to.
What's that?
This is her fortune teller. Okay.
Okay.
Could you introduce yourself and everyone else?
Sure. This is, I'm Jamie Redhan, Buckminster. I am working the CDPG grants for the town through Community Opportunities Group, which is contracted to do the work. I'm here tonight with Cassie Bethany from Weston and Sampson, and Tongi Zhang at the computer. I'm just going to do a brief history of the boring stuff and then get to the fun stuff. So just so you know, that the Bayview Park sidewalks replacement project was included in the FY 2020 CDPG application, which was due Friday, March 6th, 2020, before the world shut down. The project's scope included widened ADA-compliant sidewalks, accessibility improvements of the gazebo, and the repair or replacement of the railing alongside the raised sidewalk on Onset Avenue. Beta Group provided the initial cost estimate, which came in at about $179,000 for the project. That was back in February of 2020. Dave and Menard of Municipal Maintenance agreed to pay for engineering costs out of the town's Chapter 90 funds and to provide additional in-time services. The coronavirus state of emergency went into effect on March 10th, 2020. All attention was then turned to COVID relief grants, so DHTD startup of the FY 20 grants was delayed until March of 2021, which was pretty much a year after we wrote the initial grant. We eventually got rolling. The town ended up bringing in Weston and Sampson, who's here today, at the latter end of 2021 for the design and engineering of the park. And tonight, Cassie Bethany will be presenting the preferred plan, which was devised by our working group, which included town employees, committee members, and residents. CDPG funding is now one cog in the wheel of this particular design, and Cassie's gonna tell you more about it and what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this plan. We are all collectively very excited about the opportunity here at Bayview Park or Onset Bluffs, and we've been working hard to collect community input and come up with a preferred plan that meets all of the varied needs and goals of the community. Next slide. We'll briefly go over our project team, the project goals, what the schedule anticipated is, and then also what we've completed to date since the end of last year, what we've learned and heard so far, a brief inventory and analysis of our observations, what the alternatives have been that we've discussed with our working group so far, and present the preferred plan, and then we'll open it up for comments from the select board.
Thank you.
As Jamie mentioned, the project team includes town staff members, as well as a wide range of folks on our working group, from members of the town staff, Onset Bay Association, Residence Conservation Commission, to make sure that we're meeting all of the wide needs of the space in the community. Next slide. The goals are fairly simple in broad schemes, but when we get into the nuts and bolts, you'll see that there's lots going on in the concept plan. Above all, universal accessibility across the spaces of most importance. We're up on a hilltop, and if you walk in there, you'll know that you're walking on top of a hill. It's very steep, and most of the pathways are not accessible. We're right in the heart of Onset Village. We want to make sure that you feel connected to that village, connected to downtown, and connected to the bandshell across the street. The trees on this park property are amazing examples of their specimen type. There's one, there's some that have, we had an arborist who went into great detail about how amazing they are. We want to prune and manage and keep most of all of those, however many we can, and then enhance park visibilities and view sheds. So we launched the project in December of 2021. We went through a survey and mapping phase. We used a local surveyor who did detailed topographic plans for us that will help us in our construction documentation phase of the work. We did a tree evaluation, as I just mentioned, and we identified all the different conditions of all the trees and which, what the management plan would be to move forward with those. We're in the middle, we're nearing the end of our preliminary design phase, which has been taking place for about two months, and we're hoping for comments and potential endorsement of this plan at the end of this conversation. We'll then move into final design and construction documentation. There's a 60%, a 90%, and a 100% milestones associated with that, where we will document the concept plans and develop constructable documents that can be bid by contractors. We're hoping to complete that work by the fall of this year, so that we can go into construction. In order to create those documents, we'll need to do some studies underground. We'll do some stormwater test pits to understand what, how the water is percolating through the ground and how we can collect stormwater. And then we'll submit 90% plans to Conservation Commission for their review and approval. And then we'll go into bid and hopefully get favorable bids to construct the project. Next slide. So a few gut reactions. I personally am in love with this park property. It's an amazing piece of land that's publicly open. Anybody can go and enjoy these views of Onset Bay. Next slide. As I had mentioned, the drastic changes in topography make it challenging to get up to the top, especially when you come, when you walk along the McFadden Center, the backside of it. So we want to correct that through this process. Next slide. The sidewalk along Onset Avenue, this is an opportunity to widen it and make it more accessible. We'd also like to improve the guardrail to make it safe, and then we know that it's missing in some pieces. We're also looking at the perimeter fencing around the memorial boulder and making improvements to that, just to clean it up and make it function better. Next slide. The trees are beautiful. We'll keep nearly all of them, and they provide great shade. Next slide. And then really the edges, cleaning those up and fitting the park into the community, as I had mentioned. So there's just a little bit of a lack of identity happening right now, so we want to make sure people know where they are and this, more about this space. So this slide just accounts for the comments that we heard collectively through our working group meetings. There are many memorial benches that sit on this property. They're located in places within the lawn that are not accessible to folks who aren't able to walk over grass or roll over grass. We're gonna, we have quantified those, and we're locating them in spots that are accessible in our concept plan. We'll also consider skateboarding challenges and make sure that all of the materials that we pick are going to be sustainable in the long run. We have inventoried, and we're incorporating the memorial boulders, the rocks, and the monuments that are within the property. There are several. We'd also like to make sure that this feels like Wareham. There's no other design like the one that you'll be seeing. It's contextualized to the space, and we've had some great ideas around how to incorporate beach culture and life into impressions on the concrete sidewalk, for example. So we'll be thinking about those as we develop the design. Going to be adding pedestrian lighting throughout the park. It's along the edges, but not consistently throughout. We'll add additional power to the gazebo to make that a more functional event space. And then we were talking about a ramping system down on the South Boulevard side, and there may be permitting challenges to that that we are considering as we, as you'll see in the preferred plan. So this graphic summarizes many of those comments that I just went through. I will just note that we've studied the pathways, and we know exactly which are accessible and which aren't, and we have taken stock of tree plantings, where monuments are located, where entrances are, what the views look like, so on and so forth. I don't want to go through this in great detail unless there are specific questions later on. Next slide. We've also studied the existing topography and understand that we have a grade change of about 14 feet in certain places, and the gazebo is even higher. It's about three feet higher than the tallest elevational spot at 26. It's about three, it's 29. So the grade change is a very real challenge on this property. Next slide. And as mentioned, we have categorized all of the trees, which are excellent, fair, fair-to-poor and poor. The poor ones we are looking to remove, be the two along South Boulevard, and replant with healthier trees. There is one, there are actually two that are maintenance challenges for municipal maintenance that we'll be removing.
One second. I got a text saying we're no longer on TV.
Christian? Thank you.
You're still recording on my side, but I will cover it.
Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
Just to call out the few that we're thinking of removing, I believe it's four, B6, C3, and A1. And C3 is in good condition, but it's a plant that's a multi-stem that grows to the ground, and it's a challenge, a challenge to say the least, to maintain it, so that one will be removed. All the other ones that are slated for removal, the other five are failing, and then the rest will be preserved and made healthier. Next slide. And just to share a few examples locally of ideas around bringing a better entrance or building identity within the entrance. The example on the top, Buzzer's Bay Park in Bourne, is a project that my colleagues worked on, which incorporates local materials and plantings and specialty paving. That's a similar idea to what we have in mind. The bottom image is a more formalized brick wall and armature scenario in need of mass. Next slide. So two concepts were developed and presented to the working group, Concept A and Concept B. Concept A was widely endorsed, and so you'll see the preferred plan more or less looks very similar to this concept with some tweaks. Concept B doesn't allow for some of the positives that are gained through Concept A, so it was less preferred. Next slide. So the preferred plan is on the screen now. So the big move in this plan is to create an interior loop around an events lawn that brings more organization to the gazebo and allows for better use of that space up at the top of the hill. So folks in this, under this scenario, will be able to walk an entire loop within the park, which they can't do now. So the white lines are all pathway materials, and then at each corner, at the corner of Onset Ave and South Boulevard, and then at the crosswalk across to the bandshell, we're suggesting a diff, just a change of material, potentially a different color of the same material or a paver of some sort that brings more prominence to that space, and then flanking that space with plantings to low-maintenance plantings that can make that feel like, those spaces feel like more of an entrance. We're also incorporating a series of stairs and ramps into these pathways to allow for universal accessibility throughout, and I'll go into that in more detail in the next slide. We're bringing accessibility to the gazebo itself, and then we're going to clean up the space around the memorial rock. Right now, it's really scrubby, grassy material, so we'll introduce a material that can be better maintained, and something like gravel or-
better maintained and something like gravel or surfacing that reduces maintenance concerns. And then we'll add additional tree planting. We want to add as many trees as we can that the plan allows for, lined along pathways in support of the existing trees that will remain out there and then, and provide nice shade cover against where bench seating is located. And then we've taken stock of all the benches that were out there. There's eight of them, and then we've relocated them onto spots that make sense within this plan. And then we've made sure that those that had views before are, continue to have views along that pathway at the McFadden Center. And then we did keep a few of the monuments in place, and then we relocated a few just based on how the pathways were laying out, particularly the Aquina statue and putting that in a prominent location within the park. Next slide. So just to break down the accessibility, the lines in blue indicate pathways that would be under 5% slope, meaning just easy walking pathways that don't have ramps or handrails or stairs. The pathways that are in pink are ramps, so those would be greater than 5%, a little bit more challenging, but under 8%, so per ADA code, and those would have handrails on them. And that, and then the boxed pink areas are where there would be stairs. So theoretically, somebody can walk from across the entire site and more or less traverse the site the same way, you know, everybody is generally walking on the same pathways. There are a few locations where that's simply not possible because of the grade challenges. And then you'll see on the bottom left corner of this image, there was a desire to have a pathway down to the beach that's accessible on the South Boulevard corner that we did truth out and study. We have heard that it could be challenging from a permitting perspective, so we have looked at it. It is also fairly costly, and we're keeping it in our back pocket, but it's a potential option at this point. Next slide. And then, so that opens the floor to you all for comments, and I would just note that if there are any additional comments or input from the public beyond this meeting, that they should please email bayviewpark@wareham MA.us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that any questions that you gentlemen have come through me and are directed to Cassie, and we will go from there. Mr. Slaven, questions or comments, sir?
I've seen this a little while earlier since one of the members.
Closer to the mic, please.
Sorry, Dan. I've seen this already since one of the members is a family member, so I have no issues right now. No matter how we do it, dollar wise.
Thank you. Mr. Menese, questions or comments, sir?
Yeah, I see a preferred accessibility plan for your preferred option with, you know, your grades of less than or greater than 8%, greater than five, and less than eight. Do you have that for your Concept B plan? Were those done?
Yeah, they were. We just did, we didn't include that slot in this deck.
And is the linear footage on both plans about the same, on the sidewalks?
They're very similar.
Thank you.
All set, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, questions or comments or concerns?
Just a comment, I'm glad that something's being done to address the accessibility issues there. There's quite a crown to the top of that park up and down, and I can't imagine, especially with the surface there now, that the people who rely on wheels to get around, whether they're, you know, using a locker or whether they're in a wheelchair, find it very easy. So I'm glad that this plan addresses that.
Thank you. Tropiano?
I, I like it. That's all I can say. I like it. I think, you know, it's a long time coming and it's, really could use a facelift, and this is terrific.
Thank you. My comments would be echoing these gentlemen's. I know that it's been a long time in coming. I think it's an extremely important project for this town to complete, extremely important. It is central to Onset Village, and it is something that is seen by all of our summer visitors. I know that there is a budget shortfall, and I know that through the town administrator, we have a department that will be working very hard to help squeeze the dollars a little bit more, but my feeling is that this would be an extraordinarily good use of community preservation funds because it's recreation, it's accessibility, it's either playground or park ground, and it's also historic renovation. So to me, I would hope that through Mr. Sullivan, who is, I guess it would be Mr. Sullivan, would be helping you bulk up the budget that you're going to need to accomplish this. Can you repeat one more time the email address? I think it's very important for people to be able to comment through that and ask any questions.
Yes, thank you. The email is bayviewpark@wareham MA.us.
All one word, all smushed together. Bayview Park.
Okay, thank you.
This is, you know, I'm big on outreach, so this is our, this is our first effort to say, hey, public, please tell us what you think or what your concerns are. Everything has been in the working group so far. They've been awesome, and we are now, you know, looking to hear what the greater public has to say. So those emails will go to me, and we'll, we'll take everything under consideration.
So this presentation will be online?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, do you have any?
Did you want to elaborate? You're saying there's a, you're saying there's a budget issue, and I don't think the board's going to address that, so if you know of something you should think.
Oh, well, I'm not sure of the figures, so I would ask Ms. Revin Buckminster to be able to address that? Originally, we thought it was X, and it came in at, and then some.
Correct. We have actually been dealing with this as early as, or as late as this afternoon, talking with Mr. Menard and seeing if there's more things that his department would be willing to take on. He's 100% behind this project, and it's kind of near and dear to him. He wants to get it started, so he is looking at more in-kind services as far as, is there a ballpark figure that you feel comfortable talking about, or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly, construction work right now is challenging, to say the least, having supply chain issues through the pandemic. I'm sure we're all aware of that. And now with a war happening overseas, it just exacerbates the issue. So market conditions are not extremely favorable for construction right now. We'll hope, we're estimating conservatively so that, with the hope that pricing will come down by the time we want to do construction, but that, that, that is a hopeful and optimistic perspective. We, as Jamie mentioned, I believe there was CDBG funding in the realm of $279,000.
Correct.
We originally estimated, and mind you, that we have not done construction documents yet. We have not started truth testing the concepts beyond our initial conceptual design layouts, so there still is, is work to be done. Prelimarily, we were in the ballpark of a million dollars. We were able to work with Mr. Menard at Municipal Maintenance and pulled out quite a bit of that fee, or of that estimated budget that he can take on, a couple hundred thousand. I don't, I can't recall the exact amount off the top of my head.
I don't want to misspeak.
I don't want to misspeak either, and so we would be looking for, you know, for community preservation funds or some other funding avenue to make up that differential.
Thank you.
There may also be some accessibility grants that we could point the town to applying for that might be helpful as well. So we're doing our research right now, and I have to say that Marie Greeg in Onset has been super helpful with all her knowledge of ADA and, and what's out there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. One of the things I think is really important for everybody to look at is the, the people who were on this sort of working group, and they've been working together for a couple of years, on and off, and they have asked questions of all of the different entities who would be impacted by this improvement in central Onset, and I think, again, that you have done a really good job, you as a, as a group, the two of you, have done a really good group of bringing forward ideas that are certainly beneficial to the town and certainly to, to the village of Onset. And you've also included the public in your planning. We do have copies, hard copies of these, and maybe we could pass them out to the public so that they could actually see them and take them home. I guess, yes, Mr. Titlebaum?
I think I previously mentioned this when we were talking about the project, but just remember that these lands are not owned in fee simple by the town of Wareham. They're still owned by the Onset Bay Grove Association. So for something like this, you don't have an issue as far as the decree goes, but as far as applying for CPC funds to, to fill in any, any funding gaps, you're probably going to have to speak to Mr. War and reinvigorate the corporation with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, get him to sign off on it, because he's actually the, the legal, he, effectively, his family wound up with the, the stock in the corporation, which makes him sort of the, the owner, if you will. He's never stopped anybody ever, I think, who needed a sign off.
That is an important distinction. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yep. So, you know, he, he's very amenable. He did this with the bathhouse, revived the corporation for a limited period of time, like 60 days, just so that could be executed, and then that was it. So this has happened several times over the years, so I just remember to go to him when the time comes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Sullivan, any other comments or questions, sir?
No, but those pathways, that pathway to the beach, having roughly three of those throughout along the, the lots would be amazing access for, for people in that down in the long run. It's a, this would be a long-term project, and I am guessing that's probably one of, if not the most, the costliest part to that.
The ramp down on the South Boulevard side? It's a, yeah, it's, it's a big chunk of the fee, of the fee, which is why we isolated it to understand its costs.
It's six figures itself, right? Estimated?
Yeah. But those three, and I'm just using three as a number, you know, on opposite sides of that area going, going throughout, I think that'd be something to look into, an important, separate from this, obviously, but something we should consider.
I, I believe Ms. Revin Buckminster mentioned Ms. Greeg, who has certainly more knowledge than many people in this town about ADA issues, and I know that she's been a very active member of this group and making suggestions that helped you improve the plan, and again, I appreciate that. Is there any other question? Yes, Mr. Slaven?
Just a comment. The residents of Onset have been after us for a year and a half to fix the, along the walkway with the, the hot, the guardrail, whatever you want to call it, it's been broken. And I've been telling them constantly, we have a plan. We're not going to do it halfway and have to come back and do it again later on, and we need some time to get it done because of the costs and everything. And of course, the way things are these days, there's a lack of trust, and we've been hammered constantly, and I just want everybody to understand that this is what the game plan was, and you'll end up getting something that you never thought you could ever get. So please give us a little bit of slack as this goes through. The other thing is, I would suggest contacting Mr. Buckland. There's a bunch of opa grants and some infrastructure grants coming down, that he's already applied for a bunch of different things we're looking at. I don't think we can get it fully funded that way, but I think we can get a piece with them, but you're going to have to work with him to see what he can come up with as well.
He is part of the working group, which is great.
I understand, but it's, it's coming now, that's why I'm mentioning it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ladies, if you're all set, I think that we're all set. Thank you very much. And again, if there's anybody who would want a copy of any of these, please, Jamie, why don't you just put them sort of closer to the audience?
Sure, I'll bring them out.
People will be able to grab them.
People will be able to grab them.
Right there. Folks are right here, I assure you, these are the documents.
And, and we will have everything on the website as soon as we can.
Oh, you know what? Let's, let's, do we, I think we might want to have a vote to support this concept.
Of endorsing?
Or endorsement. Is that a motion that you just made?
I just made it.
Second.
Okay, a motion made to endorse the concept. And, second, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Yeah, I just, we'd appropriated, what, $238,000 to start?
It's $278,000 from the CDBG.
And then you moved other funds into it?
No.
Haven't done anything yet, yeah.
And?
Mr. Menard will be in kind, yeah.
In the South Boulevard, additional entrance would be six figures?
Correct. That, that ramp down to the beach.
The stairway down to the beach exists, and it would be improved, but the addition of the ramp, the switchback that go, the stair goes through, that would, that's a, that's the six-figure item.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? It is unanimous, we unanimously endorse the concept drawings, and thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Good evening. The next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote to recommend at-large commissioner for SERPED, but we didn't get any applications.
Nobody forwarded anything?
Nobody forwarded anything as late as today.
I will follow up again and ask them. I did stop in at one of them, gave them a form, etc. Just so everybody understands, again, this is, SERPED has, in three different areas, they have what they call gateway cities, and in the gateway city areas, there's four to five other communities grouped in there, and a place like Damien's Pantry or something similar can get someone as a representative from that particular committee to sit there on the SERPED commission, which makes available certain type of economic opportunities, transportation, etc. It's a good piece to have. There's no guarantee that one of them from Wareham would actually get selected. Obviously, New Bedford always gets something selected from their particular group, so I was trying to get someone from Wareham to step up. We do what we can and are right here, but it'd be nice if we can do that. There's no guarantee, though.
No, and we did, in fact, the office did reach out to.
Yeah, and I physically went through one of them as well.
All right.
So can I ask just a quick question through you to select me, Slaven? So what are the parameters for the at-large commissioner?
Explain what you mean by parameters.
You know, to qualify.
They just have to be a nonprofit organization that represents minorities.
Okay.
In particular.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item C.
Discussion and, discussion and possible vote to authorize the town administrator to execute an MOU between the Buzzards Bay Coalition and the town of Wareham regarding the purchase of Little Harbor Country Club.
Okay, you were sent a copy of the proposed MOU either Thursday or Friday by Mr. Sullivan, and it's pretty straightforward. Mr. Sullivan, I'll ask you to address the fact that this is the last missing piece of the things that were required by the town meeting in order to use community preservation funds to purchase the property known as Little Harbor.
Right. The parameters that were set forth were the appraisal in the town's name, that's been done, the, the survey of the property, that's been done, the site assessment, which came back positive, as a, not posi, as a favorable. Positive can be negative in those cases.
Can you turn the lights back on?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Twenty heaven words.
Now, now you can hear him better.
So I think that we hit the three, and then the fourth was an MOU with the, with the qualified organization to hold the CR, and the MOU is, it's really just an MOU stating what, what the understanding is of the organizations, so.
So an MOU, for those of you who haven't spent your life looking at abbreviations, is a memorandum of understanding, and it is, what is before us is a draft of a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Buzzards Bay Coalition. You all are aware that prior to town meeting, the town was actively working with Wareham Land Trust to try and devise a conservation, an MOU that would, which would serve the people of the community. which would serve the people of the community in the preservation of the fifty-four point thirty-three acres of land known as Little Harbor Country Club. It was clear from the town meeting vote, um, that it, there is overwhelming support for what I would call parkland preservation of this property. And, um, prior to the town meeting on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, um, the discussions between the town and the Wareham Land Trust, uh, came, stopped with mutual agreement because we felt it was unfair to continue to discuss and negotiate with, um, with a town meeting coming up and not knowing what was going to happen. Subsequent to that, we were told by several land conservation boards that you don't issue RFPs for MOUs for CRs. How's that for a mouthful? And so, at a Friday meeting duly called, this board chose to rescind the writing or the offering of the request for proposals, the RFP. That was done, I don't remember what the date is, but it was a Friday. Subsequent to that, um, Mr. Sullivan was in conversations, I know, with Buzzards Bay Coalition, and this is the result of his discussions with that entity. And, leave it at that. Any questions or comments from the board, Mr. Sullivan? I mean, Mr. Slaven?
Change names?
No. No, I'm sorry.
Who was more insulted?
It must be my night for insulting or getting it all wrong.
Probably both Sandy's.
Ooh. No? Okay. Mr. Minis? Questions or comments, sir?
Yeah, about the rest, the, uh, MOU?
Yes, please.
I, I think personally that you might wanna consider, um, increasing your, your footprint of the areas that you want outside of the CR, um, for some of the facilities buildings, which is not indicated in here. Um, 'cause you may need to do things, and, um.
Right here?
Yeah, I read that.
Okay.
But it's not in there. You only have one building. There's two other buildings that are used for maintenance, construction, and otherwise that you might wanna do that on. I did see the contract, uh, not, well, not the contract, but the agreement is for twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
To hold it. So, I wanted people to know that.
Yes, and they can also.
So, just let me.
Yep, okay.
Other than that, um, we haven't yet voted to endorse it.
That's correct.
We will be taking a vote on it. And, um, the golf course, Little Harbor Golf Course Committee, um, endorsed it. Is they have no authority, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, they endorsed it, and Mr. Sullivan, I believe, negotiated with this one group, correct?
This was the one that I was engaged with.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Um, I will point out that, that during the last conversations that were held with the Wareham Land Trust, the price for stewardship was seventy-five thousand dollars. Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions, comments on this?
Uh, not in particular about the, the specifics under the MOU, or, I think you should be mindful of what Jim had to say about possibly expanding some of the area. Uh, I would like to, however, thank, uh, the Wareham Land Trust. I, I know they were interested in this, uh, and I appreciate that we had two organizations that were certainly qualified to have held the restriction. And that's actually an enviable position to be in, uh, if, if, if you're the town. Uh, so I would like to thank them for their interest, and I know that there was support from them at town meeting, and I'd like to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Troppiano?
Uh, no, I'm okay.
Okay, my comment, I guess, uh, Mr. Um, Minis, I, I believe that that might be something that would be some, to, to look a little bit further at, which would be item two B. The, the maintenance garage is.
Um, just, if, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead.
So, with, uh, through you, uh, to, to Selectman Minis, so the CR will allow for maintenance of existing structures on property, but not the construction of new buildings. So, you're saying, try and figure out envelopes for maybe?
Yeah, I, I, I would. You, you don't know what'll happen, and if the needs are, are, to, are, if the needs are, if they're being met, or they may be met, storage of equipment, um, I don't know if they have concrete floors.
Yes.
Um, you know, for storage of chemicals and stuff, as a containment barrier and stuff, so, there's a bit to consider. And I'm not saying make these huge expanses, uh, of, of area you're taking out with the CR. It's all still remains in the, under the property, but, you know, leave yourself a little wiggle room.
Good point.
You do, don't do it now, it's, you can change it, but it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, well, understand that an, an MOU is an agreement to negotiate.
Right.
Um, from time to time, it may take upwards of eight months or nine months in order to get a real, uh, conservation restriction document written and approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well as everybody else, so.
Um, uh, through you, uh, Selectman Minis, uh, I'm trying to think about language, uh, language that would allow for the MOU sort of, sort of tonight, uh, I'm just trying to think of, uh, that we will, we will work to identify envelopes that would, uh, what, what do you think? What would you say?
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Identify envelopes around the other maintenance buildings.
Okay. That's all.
Um, just for the record, it does show in the appraisal, um, that, as well as the twenty-one E report, that the floors are, in fact, concrete in all buildings with the exception of one shed where no chemicals are stored. That is on record.
And it's just one other thing, too, when, when referencing the, um, the septic down by the clubhouse and whatnot, I don't know if that's the best place for it, as it's elevation to the, um, wetlands and the water tables. So, just keep that in mind in your negotiations also. I mean, Mr. Troppiano would know a bit about that.
Well, the, the distance would make a difference. You, you, you could add a lot of complication to it if you had to pump it in a distance, uh, cost-wise, it could add a considerable amount of cost. Be quite frank with you, it's gonna be, in its location where it's gonna be, it's gonna be denitrified system anyway, uh, when they put it in. So, it's not gonna be the cheapest system in the world, I can tell you that.
We had budgeted for about fifty thousand dollars, I believe.
Yeah, and that's, that's probably, uh, probably gonna use that, too.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Then I will ask for a motion.
I move that we approve this, uh, uh, I mean, authorize that the, uh, town administrator to sign the MOU with the, um, addition of that we will negotiate the areas around the buildings.
Work, work to identify envelopes.
Work to identify the envelopes around the buildings.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? That addition, um, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is the discussion and possible vote to dra, uh, draft, uh, letter of support for the six-unit rentals to the location of the, of the land.
Now, last week, we heard from Mr. Buckland about this, um, proposed development. And at that point, we were simply being told what it was. I wanna make clear to everyone that we are not the permitting authority for any of these, uh, forty-B or friendly fortyBs, and that's what this. It would be the zoning board of appeals. What the, um, uh, the proposal is, uh, requires a, a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen as well as from the Wareham Area Housing Trust if they choose to, um, recommend it, uh, in order to help it wend its way through DHCD. Um, so, there, at the zoning board of appeals, if this gets that far, the neighbors will all be notified, they will get certified letters, and they will have an opportunity to speak for or against the project at the zoning board of appeals meeting. This is not the area nor the meeting where the public would be given an opportunity to speak. We are only here to discuss whether we would be in support of a small friendly forty-B or not. And we, again, we heard the presentation last week. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Minis?
Um, through you, um, as, uh, the, is it a person here, Mr. Busherman?
Mr. Busherman is here, and he may answer yes or no's, basically.
Do you own the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I went on the.
Excuse me, can you identify yourself for the records?
Stephen Bushman, Nineteen Depot Street.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I, I went on the, um, registered deeds website. It, it stated that I.
Beth Ann Gould?
Beth Ann Gould owned it.
That's my partner. That's my fiancee.
Okay, so she's the owner of it.
Yes, sir. When the project goes through, we're gonna put it in.
And, you know, you, you would come to the Affordable Housing Trust a year and a half ago. It was six one-bedroom units. It's six three-bedroom units now. And I, I like the idea of a, a friendly forty-B lip. I, I don't know about the impact. You know, so that's all I need to say.
Thank you. And, uh, just for the record, Mr. Um, Minis is chairman of the Wareham Area Housing Trust, correct? Affordable housing. I can never get it right. Yep, thank you. Mr. Troppiano?
All right, so, uh, it's interesting, because I had originally talked to a neighbor, and one of the neighbors, uh, said that everybody was kind of on board, and then that changed because I had a woman come up to me at town meeting and was pretty adamant against the project. Um, interesting enough, Mrs. Bakayaki, who lives down there, is, is, you know, in favor of the project. So, uh, you know, look, the thing about these things are, is that they're, they're, they're good projects because they're small projects and they're nestled into our community, and they fit usually typically in the area. As opposed to that hundred-and-fifty-unit monstrosity at the end of Redwood Road, which is nothing but a monstrosity. Now, you can have a lot of those, or you can have one of those, or two or three of those, or you can have a lot of these little ones that just kinda nestle and fit into the community. That's really the options. Those are the options you have. To me, this is a better project than something like that. And that's why I'm so in favor of this project. I think it fits in there. I think it's nice to have it fit in there. Um, as far as the number of bedrooms that you end up with, that's gonna be done by the zoning board of appeals, not us. And I'm not so sure you'll end up with three bedrooms in every unit by the time you're done. I don't know. I don't know how many units will be affordable by the time you get out of there. That's all part of the process that you're gonna go through in order to get to where you're gonna go. But as far as I'm concerned, as far as I think we're concerned, I think this is a good thing for, for the community to have these smaller projects that fit in there. That property was a die for a long time. We had to take it down. Man, we had, uh, Barboza had to go in there and take it down. It was falling down. It, uh, it could've killed some of the kids. It was in such bad shape. And so, somebody buys it now, and, uh, they take the building down and they get rid of everything. It's terrific. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we get the money back, we start to get some money back from the property. It's actually a good deal. I, I can't see any downside of this at all. And, uh, I'm all in favor of it, and I hope that you do a good job like you did with the ones, 'cause I looked, 'cause, you know, if somebody asks me these things, I pay attention. And I looked at the ones you did, and I thought they were really nicely done. They sit in a nice little spot. Even, your grass looks better than mine. I don't know how, how you did it, frankly. Your grass looks a lot better than mine. Just saying, you know? But anyway, so that's why I think it's a good project, and I think we all should jump on for this, and then let the zoning board of appeals iron out the detail.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, uh, might've been the same person, uh, Patrick encountered at town meeting who reached out to me and expressed concern over the increase in, in what she had, uh, thought the project was going to be. Uh, so, so for myself, I'm probably gonna stay on the vote. It's not that I don't support the notion of the project, but I think you gotta go bang on a couple of those down there first. And, you know, uh, with regard to, uh, you know, y- you'll wind up with the vote you need, but, but for myself, I think I need to abstain at this point.
Thank you. Okay, um, you did have a copy of a draft letter, um, of support in the packet, and so I would ask if there's no further discussion?
I move we authorize the chair to sign the, uh, the letter, uh, I think, is this it here?
Yes.
Yeah, this is it here. Uh, for s, for the six, six-chap-lane, uh, forty-B lip project.
Which would be sent to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development.
Correct, opposed to DHCD.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I would just like to say that, uh, I hope you'll consider reducing the number of bedrooms within the proposal. I think, uh, it would still be financially doable for you, and it would, would help, um, with the neighborhood impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I would just wanna remind everyone, we are not the permitting authority. We are simply writing a letter, presumably writing a letter of support for the project. Any further discussion? I have a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter of support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Four zero one. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Buckland will have the letter of support tomorrow morning. Mr. Busherman?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, folks. I appreciate the support.
And discussion and possible vote regarding the right of first refusal to purchase lands noted on the sixty-one A partial land conversion off Charge Pond Road, Wareham, map one fifteen lots, one thousand two B and one thousand eight.
This came before us quite a long time ago, um, as is required, um, under Mass General Law, when something comes out of an Aggie land, it needs to be offered the right of first refusal to the town. Um, we notified Open Space Community Preservation, Redevelopment, Assessing, Town Planner, and Wareham Land Trust, and we got a negative response from all of those bodies, saying that they were not interested in pursuing purchasing the land. So, I would ask that.
This is the one by Municipal Maintenance, or which one?
Yes.
So, we, we met with them, we've been unable, it was not the best interaction, we've been unable to come to an agreement to, to move that road where, where it would've been best for, suited for the town.
So, what do you think? What do you wanna do?
Up to you. I mean, it's, uh.
May I, may I, um?
Sure.
When did we receive the, um?
The first letter?
The request, yeah.
It's gotta be.
I mean, it's probably right here. Wait a second. Um, that's the.
It's in, like, February, isn't it?
No, we, 'cause we have sixty days or ninety days.
No, we have like a hundred and twenty, you know?
We had.
So, why don't we, I, I would.
Table.
Yeah, and, and see what we can do, and maybe we can discuss things a little bit more, um, if, if you think that would be a, a favorable solution.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind, uh, select board member being involved in that.
Did you give some numbers? Do you have any idea what the, what the value of the property is?
Well, it's not just the value of the property, it's about.
Whatever they wanna do with it.
Yeah, the, the access points. I mean, realistically, if the, if the town wanted, you could, you could act favorably from the property, um, try and grow and do a, do a solar farm if, if you wanted to as the town, but that wasn't the, uh, you know, so.
I think you need to do some homework, because it was up to me, and we were having a problem and can't make it happen, and we just, we, we exercise our rights.
Right. See the part, the one is the, it's the access point that by, by, uh, bisects the town property, if you will.
Right.
Um, they did bring up that they, they believe they had mineral rights on the town property as a response, so.
Well, is there gold in there we don't know about?
No.
You shouldn't just don't wanna go. Exercise their rights on this?
No.
Okay, so let's-
So let's not give up the rights then.
Okay, so let's, um, may I have a motion to table this?
So won't.
For a two-week period to give-
More.
We're, we're-
So we've, from what have, we have up to a hundred and twenty days.
Right, we've had it for, we've had it for a while. I don't remember how long we've had it. We've had it for a while. Okay, we'll table it for-
Well, let's find out and make sure that we all pass the deadline.
Uh, okay.
Well, that's, uh-
February sixteenth I have here.
February sixteenth, okay.
So how many days is that? Somebody figure it out.
So it should be June, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
June eighteenth or something like that.
Okay. There you go.
So that your motion is to, um-
Right tabled.
Saying that he's been tabled.
Pass over the article.
Good job, Pete. To unentabled.
Yo. Motion is to pass over and to bring it back sometime before, um, June, the expiration of the, uh, offering time. Is there a second to that?
If they don't wanna ta-talk to us, they may not be so happy when we just take the property, you know, we just take, buy it. That'll be the end. All right, next case.
Okay, the motion and a second to table it or pass over. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining is unanimous.
Uh, okay. Next is review and possible vote to amend the settlement policy, oh-two dash seven, got the sixty-one A S fourteen notification. I think, uh, I think we had a problem with that other notification that it didn't get to the land trust as quick as it should have. So I think, uh, Judy, it was your idea to update this and add the other landing boards?
Um, the policy statement as written, um, requires us to notify Wareham Land Trust. And, um, I am suggesting that we change the policy to say blah, blah, blah. As a courtesy, said notification will also be forwarded to land preservation conservation organizations. Massachusetts Audubon, Bosworth Bay Coalition, Wareham Land Trust, Wildlands Trust and any other organization which may have a presence in the town of Wareham. I think it's fair to give every one of the, uh, bodies that support us an opportunity to know what's going on in the neighborhood or in the town.
Um, and I'm sorry to interrupt right off the bat.
You just did.
I, but I'm going to, cause that suits you, the theme of the night. The, I think the vagaries of the end of that statement could get you in a lot of hot water.
Yeah.
All right, so have a-
Just name, just name the priorities and if somebody else comes up down the road, then just add them to the list.
So ended at, ended, ended at Wildlands Trust? Is that what you're saying? Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah. Yeah, whoever, you, you listed like three or four, just put those in there as named party.
Just take on any other organizations.
And any other organization. Okay. Excellent. Any other questions on that? Yep. Mr. Manese?
As a, zoning board is an appeal board and, and not a, um, I don't know if I'd have them in there.
They really know the land use board.
Yeah.
Do we have the redevelopment authority?
And, and I think that only two of the boards can hold property, if I'm correct. Could that be Concom and Open Space? But community preservation usually funds things.
Yeah, but you know what? You know what, Jim? You know, you're right. Except that they may have some projects that are in the works that they might wanna look at and it may be relevant at that point, so maybe it's okay to do it. I mean, they, they probably come back and-
They can't hold property, right?
No, no, but they could ask us to hold the project.
Right. See, I was trying to give the opportunity to all of the land trust, all of the planning boards and, planning boards in town that might have interest in land-
Yeah, that's all right.
Notified.
I'm, I'm good. I'm good.
It's, it's, I'd rather have everybody say, oh yeah, I got that and be able to pass on it even if they have no skin in the game, if you will. Mr. Slaven?
Do you wanna add the two districts? Even though they're separate.
Fine.
The reason being is they may have land, that land may be about their land.
No, that's, that's perfectly-
Perfect, Jim.
Yeah.
Same with WRA.
And WRA?
Okay.
Okay. I will bring this back next week.
And Affordable Housing Trust?
You want, you want that on there?
Yeah, sure. I mean-
I think I need to increase my stamp budget.
WAHT, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I will bring it back next week with all of those changes for your ratification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up then would be discussion and possible vote to adopt the beach sticker policy.
Now, you got from, um, this came about because every day, not every day, but almost every day, I drive down to Little Harbor Beach and I see people with their dogs pooping on the beach. And I see people who have Rhode Island license plates and I see people who have Maine license plates and I see all sorts of stuff going on. So I had an opportunity to speak with Mc, Mr. Buckminster and I said, you know, how can I help you, um, make sure that Little Harbor Beach specifically, but our town beaches other than Onset Beach are being, um, properly whateverd? So he aimed me in the right direction or the direction of this Plymouth Beach policy, uh, which you have in front of you and which was in the packet. What Mr. Buckminster suggested we do was get rid of the last sentence about daily stickers.
Commercial vehicles.
Mr. Tropiano has noted that we should be get rid of, which one is that?
It shouldn't be, uh, it shouldn't be commercial vehicles at all, says the town registration. It says if the vehicle is registered to a business, local or in or out of town.
Okay, so you're under four?
Business vehicles should never have stickers and stuff on them, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Not, not to a public beach, you know what I mean? Because all of a sudden, somebody could literally do a bus and the next thing you know, you got a bus full of people going down there that, that probably don't even belong.
You do have the pickup trucks that are-
You get pickup trucks, I get that, but you know, if they're pickup trucks and they're commercially registered, then you know.
And I, I just wanna clarify that Chairman Whiteside must have come to me to request going to Mr. Buckminster.
I did, after the fact. You slapped me upside the head.
Okay, nice.
I, I also know that last year, um, they ran out of stickers. And people who were residents couldn't get the stickers, the summer residents, so it's an effort to make life easier, not harder.
That's a non sequitur audit. If there's, if there, you're saying there's people there that are from out of town, they couldn't have gotten stickers.
No.
Otherwise the, but you can get stickers if you are out of town, if you have an out-of-town license plate, if you own property in the town, so that's, I just think, let's not-
But that's covered in here.
So.
So, if, if I may?
Yep.
Even as, uh, we're speaking now, you can get non-resident beach stickers for Swift Beach and Onset Boat Ramp. Um, guest placards, the, the, uh, the hangars are good for Little Harbor, Swift Beach and Swift's Neck and, um, at fifty dollars and you can give them out to who you like. So, I mean, I'm looking at our website.
Yep.
Beach parking fees online.
Yep.
But so, um, I, I don't know how, how we should address that as we've already started the season. I know what you're trying to do.
Well, we haven't, uh, well, I'm not aware, I guess that probably people are buying beach stickers at the moment, but I don't, okay. See, this was never an issue when we had the dump stickers and the beach stickers all on the same sticker. Because you went in and you bought one and, and that was it. And then when we split, it becomes more difficult. Do you wanna bring it back next week with some suggestions both ways? Looking at what we have online and, or what would you, what would you rather do, Mr. Manese?
Um, you know, it's, it's one of those things, like you're saying, you're going down now and nobody's really enforcing it because there's not a lot of people and in the summer you, you get, uh, parking attendants that would be enforcing it. So I think you, you kinda have to look at, uh, bring it back, I don't know, maybe Mr. Sullivan and-
No.
Well, we-
In Onset.
Yeah, in Onset, but we also have some people that go around the other beaches as well, so.
Yeah, DNR does.
I think we're looking at something, I, I think you're correct, this is a twenty-twenty-three solution. So I would get the parties together, start sa, start saying, what are the issues? I know Patty has a bunch of problems. I think that's just the, the constant questions. Um, I don't know that there was an increase in negativity from, from switching from one sticker to the other, to, to all this other stuff. I think let's, let's figure out what the real issues are on this.
Okay. So-
Yeah, I can tell you I didn't like it when you switched it. And I know a lot of other people didn't like it. When it got switched to two separate stickers, I think everybody that I know of said, how come we have two stickers? So you didn't hear it maybe from people, but you should've. Because I, I know, I, everybody I talked to, nobody liked the fact that there were two stickers. No one. So I, I don't know where you got that from.
What do you mean? There's, there's-
Well, so let's-
Two stickers now instead of one. It used to be just one.
Right.
And nobody likes it. I can tell you that right now, so.
Then you started a trash program.
Right.
Which is completely separate.
Well, I'm, well, I'm not saying that there, there isn't a reason for.
Tell them.
I'm just saying that this was the deal.
Okay, so, um, what I get is that you would prefer us to put it all, yes, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, I, I think you should put it up. Uh, just a couple of observations. Uh, to Patrick's point about commercial vehicles, we know there's a lot of people in town that have, you know, work trucks, things like that. I think you can deal with that problem by just, uh, capping the number of occup, the, the vehicle occupant load to eight or something like that. That typ, that takes care of like your Suburbans and your, uh, vehicles like that, I think. Uh, and then you don't have to worry about the guy buying a jitney bus and running tours down there or something.
I don't know how you put that on the sticker though.
Well, you wouldn't put it on the sticker. You just would say, what is the vehicle? And when you look at the vehicle, you see what the capacity is and then either makes it or it doesn't.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I just know that it could be-
Oh yeah, no, I get it. I get it.
Believe me, if you, if you, if you leave a hole, they'll climb through it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could have a double decker in there.
Exactly. In fact, they'll double through it.
And, and the second thing is I'm just made to hear from our chairman, people are pooping on the beach.
No, the dogs are pooping on the beach. I didn't say that. I said the dogs are pooping on the beach.
I didn't know people were pooping.
Why don't you clarify? Thank you.
No, they go down there, they walk, they let the dogs loose on the beach.
Which they're not supposed to do.
Which they're not supposed to do. The dogs have a high old time chasing the, the gulls and if they go further down, the protected species. And then, you know, the dog comes back to the car. Now, I don't know too many dogs that can run for fifteen minutes and get excited and not-
Defecate?
Yeah.
Is that a better word?
Do their business one way or the other. And it's not being cleaned up. It's absolutely irresponsible. So anyway.
It's a board of health regulation for a reason, you know?
Yeah, I know. So we will bring this back some other time. Next.
Next up then is discussion and possible vote, uh, on the commitment of curbside, and I don't, I wanna keep this around long. I, uh, for Mr. Foster, please accept this letter as the board's commitment for FY twenty-two. Curbside revenue in the amount of one million, two, uh, one million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. And I move, yay, okay, this will be settled.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question?
Yep.
Does this include the, um, transfer station income?
Now, that would be just, just the curbside commitment.
In which part of that goes towards?
What you use for the operation.
All right, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining is unanimous.
All right, next up is discussion and possible vote to issue a letter of support regarding the sale of Royal Crest, uh, Mobile Home Park. Now, as you, as we talked, uh, well, I don't know if everybody was listening, but we, there, there's, a lot of the residents are now buying these parks and these people wanna buy the park and they're looking for support, uh, to be able to do that. And, uh, I move that we approve it and then you guys can say whatever you want.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. You do have a sample letter which was provided in order for, that, there are, I think, three different parks in town that have been bought by, um, a company from out of state. And in terms of, um, this, um, Royal, Royal Crest Mobile Home, I can't say that very fast, um, the occupants have the right of first refusal and in order for them to qualify for certain grants and opportunities, we would need to have a letter of support and that is what, um, I had drafted.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think it's an excellent idea. Those mobile home parks can be cash cows, so rather than, you know, an outside owner making money, the residents can own the park and their own money's reinvested into it how they see fit, so.
I think for the public, I'm, I, if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna read the letter, the sample letter into the record.
Is there, is, I think there's a-
I'm Bob Costa, Chairman of the, uh-
Okay, Mr. Costa.
Royal Crest, so if you have any questions, I can certainly try to answer them.
Okay, why don't you come sit up here and I'm gonna read into the record the letter of, that you have requested of us. Thank you for identifying yourself. Congressman Bill Keating, blah, blah, blah. Recommunity project funding request from the Cooperative Development Institute. Dear Representative Keating, this letter is in support of the Cooperative Development Institute's community project funding request to support the acquisition and preservation to support the acquisition and preservation of Royal Crest Mobile Home Park in West Wareham, Mass. As an affordable housing community. My favorite words about mobile homes. Three times sometime. Owned by a local family, Royal Crest has a hundred and forty-five homes and has provided much-needed, affordable senior housing in our town for several decades. Royal Crest is currently up for sale and the residents have exercised their right of first refusal, taking steps to become a resident-owned park. As a resident-owned community, ROC, Royal Crest would be a not-for-profit and operate like a small town with a board of directors meeting regularly to conduct community business in open meetings, a membership body that would gather annually to approve a budget and hold elections, and a professional third-party property management company. The residents would individually own their homes as they do now and collectively own the land upon which those homes sit. Royal Crest would also have the ongoing support of the Cooperative Development Institute, CDI, a five oh one C three that provides technical assistance to fifty-four ROCs throughout New England. The Cooperative Development Institute is part of a larger network called ROC USA, which supports two hundred and ninety-three resident-owned communities across the United States. A large private equity company based in Arizona is also interested in purchasing Royal Crest, as they have already done to three other such communities in Wareham in twenty twenty-one alone. By becoming resident-owned, Royal Crest would be able to keep valuable housing stock in local control. Not, not out-of-state control. With the federal support Representative Keating's office can provide, resident ownership will allow seniors on fixed incomes to stay in their homes, not worrying about the next owner and the owner after that. There is no rent control for manufactured housing in our town and so no control over what an investor community owner can charge. Approval of this request will enhance the work and capacity of the Affordable Housing Network in the South Shore, which ripples throughout the state of Massachusetts. We ask that you give positive consideration to the CDI submission for the preservation of Massachusetts Affordable Housing Stock, sincerely myself.
It's a shame we can't get the legislator to vote that, huh?
Yes. All right, Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions, the young man, Mr. Costa?
He's probably my age. We, as you know, we've been trying to get, you know, manufactured homes counted as affordable, we've had no luck.
Twice.
More, more than twice.
Twice through town meeting.
Well, twice through town meeting, I don't know how many times through the legislature. The only question I have is that, one of the stumbling blocks that we keep getting told by our senator and a couple of other people is that the DOR is supposed to getting the financial statements of all the park, not the owner of the park, but the actual residents of the park. Is one of the reasons they say that they won't do it because they don't know status of their. If this is something, your particular park, you guys buy it? Would you be willing to supply that information?
Absolutely.
So that's all I want to hear.
We're going back right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Costa.
That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Minis, comments?
Yeah, yes, I spoke a, we communicated a little bit online with Mr. Costa. And this is congressional earmark legislation funding you're looking for? And it would be nice if somehow it could funnel down through HUD. I think that's, that's, sometimes that's some of the.
Yeah.
Get a little bit of traction on it if, if the funding comes through a housing program. And I think you were looking for possibly state funding too?
We are having conversation right now with Department of Housing and Development. See, yes. And we've got their ear and they're listening to what we're presenting to them. They see it as probably a very viable solution to some of the housing issues that not only we are facing, but other communities in the state. So that's, that's where we think your support would come in tremendously for us.
Hush, 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 come on.
I think that's very good and it could help us.
Yes, exactly.
Help you.
Yes.
The community and the community life, thank you.
Absolutely.
For the record, please, Mr. Costa, could you state your full name and your address?
Yes, my name is Robert Costa. I live at thirty-four Prince Drive here in Royal Crest Park.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Ca- Mr. Costa, I think it was said, so I apologize. How many units altogether?
Uh, right now, we have a hundred and forty-four occupied residents.
Yeah.
The lot is, the lots are a hundred and fifty-four, so we have some vacant lots right now that we hope that will be able to fill once we go through the process.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, question? Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, one of the sticking points that's always been brought up when we tried to go to Beacon Hill and to get these things designated as affordable housing is the disconnect between the fact that you've got a fixture sitting on somebody else's land. And so this resolves that. I would suggest trying to talk with the Department of Housing and Community Development as well to see what sort of structure you want to do for your ownership. I would think, just off the top of my head, and I don't know, but I would think if you set it up as something similar to a condominium setup and you actually divide the interests so that the resident who has the mobile home on their plot of land has control of the land as well, we may be able to do better on, on Beacon Hill with getting these things classified as affordable. That's always been brought up towards the sticking point.
Right, the, the, and that was brought up by a lot of our residents. Would we own the lot ourselves or would it, actually, would the, with the help that we're getting and the process that's been used through, for a lot of these grant fundings, they, the land has to be purchased and bought collectively. So every member has a voting share regardless of how many, if there's two people or one people in the home. They all have a voting share on any large capital expenditures over a certain amount. So that, that is a, is an issue, but we also understand what the town faces with the forty B issue. And I've done a lot of research since we've got into this mess here. It seems obviously what you folks have been through because I think the, the laws and some of the rules and regulations are very ambiguous, to say the least. And I, as, as a board member right now, are certainly going to pursue that further, maybe with other boards throughout the Commonwealth that have mobile home parks because I'm sure the other communities are faced as well with the same situation that Wareham is. Certainly, I'm more concerned with our situation in Wareham, but we would certainly give a hundred percent support behind that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Another, another point too is, you, you, in the past, when we've gone up to try to testify on the bills that were, were filed, you know, requested by town meeting, filed by, you know, state legislator, you know, one of the things I've tried to impress upon the Joint Committee on Housing is that by not counting these as affordable housing, it makes it, it doesn't incentivize us to do things like spend community development block grants to help people out.
Absolutely.
Where we do have a housing rehab program, so if you own a property and fee simple, you can apply for that.
That's right.
The guidelines, with this you can't.
Exactly.
And so I, I think that's something to, to be considered in all of this too, is that this is a way to improve the existing housing stock going forward. If you, if you classify them as affordable, then you, you make it, you incentivize the town to, to jump in with some of those block grant funds to help out every so often.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
If you can, I appreciate you writing a letter to me. For the Serp Ed Commission, I chair that. We represent twenty-seven communities in the southeast Mass.
Sure.
And we can forward that as well. We do a lot of work back and forth with.
Oh, absolutely.
Kristine Kluschman at DHCD, so I'd be glad to help as much as I can.
We were, we were very fortunate, at one of our recent meetings, we had two board members from two separate resident-owned communities to go over what the process was that they went through and how it's worked out for their benefit. One was the purchase of Taunton Mobile Home Park that, quite frankly, an extension of the company that just bought the three mobile home parks in East Wareham, went in and bought that park. The residents initially voted as a group to explore the possibility of purchasing it and for whatever reason it got voted down. So that, that part of, that investment company bought that park. Three years later, they turned around and put it on the market. And the owners at that time then decided to buy the park, but it cost them three and a half million dollars more at that point to purchase that park. Halifax Park, the president visited with us and they are the largest resident-owned community in the country. They have over, over five hundred and some odd mobile homes in their park. And they absolutely astounded by how well this has worked out for them. And it's, it operates like a small community within the community. They keep the park affordable for the residents that live there. And in the Taunton Park, since they purchased that park, six years later, their rent, lot rent increase went up five dollars. And that was because of water and sewage costs. So it can be done.
If there's any other discussion, I do have a draft of that letter that, which I just read. And if you gentlemen have no other questions, I would ask for a motion.
Okay, motion to, I just said a motion. Motion, a motion to, the motion to allow the chair to sign a letter of.
Who seconded it?
Second.
It was motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, allowing of telling the chair to write the letter of support, say aye?
Aye.
Close, standing, unanimous. The letter will be available in the Selectment's office, which is at the other end of the hall, sometime after noon tomorrow af- tomorrow. Okay, because I, you need to hand deliver it, am I right?
Excuse me?
Do you need to hand deliver the letter?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it'll be ready tomorrow for you.
I really appreciate that. And obviously you can, now, letter of support, by the way, because we are talking with the state. When we're ready to make that pitch and hopefully go forward grants to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, we could probably use a letter of, of support of that as well. That's the one I think that really will make a difference for us in our community.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Costa, it's nice to meet you.
When you, when you go to the State House, contact me, I'll go with you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening.
All right, so next we're going to do ratify of hires, so let's get the directional inspection services. Kate Thomas Kowalowski, Water Pollution Control, did I say that right?
No.
How do you say it?
Kowalski.
Kowalski, well, isn't too far off. Water Pollution Control Facility Laborer, Patrick Brophy, I wonder if he's related to Sean. Seasonal parking enforcer for DNR, Lisa Drought, seasonal parking enforcement.
Give me a break. Do art.
It's close.
If you didn't say anything, it would have been fine. But you have to say stuff. Antonia Marietta, that's pretty good, right? Seasonal Deputy Harbor Master, Michael Littlelet, oh, he's a teacher in town, he's, he's a nice kid. I like that guy, he's a good guy. He played, he was a baseball coach with me for years. Seasonal Deputy Harbor Master of the DNR. Matthew Glennon, Seasonal Deputy Harbor Master for the DNR. I move we approve all of those.
That we ratify all of those?
It's the same thing, approve, ratify, it's the same damn thing.
Motion made and seconded to ratify the hire.
My God, I'm glad I'm out of here tomorrow.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing, and now we will go to Mr. Turner, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan's going to handle this one.
Mr. Sullivan's going to handle this one.
I think he knows how to say Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I start off by greeting the Honorable Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Tonight I come before you seeking affirmation.
Oh, there you go, see, there's another new word.
For the hiring of Mr. Paul E. Turner.
Affirmation.
As the Wareham Building Commissioner, we received six applications for the position. Three candidates were, were chosen to be interviewed by myself, Assistant Town Administrator Dory Allen England, and Part-Time Building Commissioner David Moore. The two top candidates were moved forward to a final interview round. The interviewers were Ms. Allen England, Selectman Judith Whiteside, and Director of Planning and Community Development Ken Buckland. The panel chose Mr. Turner as the candidate to hire. Some background, Mr. Turner has been the, has been the building trade since nineteen eighty-five and was hired by the Town of Bridgewater as their local building inspector in two thousand sixteen. He has served admirably in that position, currently holds a local inspector's certificate, a construction supervisor license, there was various other licenses and certificates. Mr. Turner has passed the legal and management modules for the Building Commissioner license and is currently preparing for the ICC Building Codes and Standards, which is the final module, to attain the, the license. If hired, Mr. Turner has one year to pass the final module and expects to do it much sooner. So, so we did, Mr. Turner received four glowing recommendations from his references, including two current building commissioners that spoke in strongly in favor of his character and work ethic. We have offered the position to Mr. Turner pending the Wareham, the Board of Selectmen's affirmation and look forward to having him as part of the Wareham team. Thank you for your consideration in this manner, in this matter.
Are there any questions, Mr. Slaven? Mr. Minis?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Tropiano?
No.
And Mr. Titlebaum?
Just one, so is it the year, is the year he has to pass his exams and get the final Building Commissioner certification, is that in, in the contract that you worked out with him? Or did they go chap on forty-three, because it used to be eighteen months?
Yeah, we, we try, we want it done in a year.
Okay, so, so under the law, he would have eighteen months, but here actually narrowed the timeframe.
Right.
Okay, good, that's what I was checking.
I'd really like to get it done in six months, that's the.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, because he needs that certification review cert types of points, honestly, so.
It helps out.
Yeah.
He's, he was very aggressive in terms of pursuing parts one and two and had those right under his belt and is already working on part three. So he was a very impressive candidate, in my opinion.
I will tell you, considering in the private sector and these industries, the people are still raking it in hand over fist. It's a, it's a tough position to fill right now, so I think we got a great candidate.
How many applicants go?
We had six altogether.
I move we ratify Mr. Turner's.
Affirm.
Oh, oh, we're going to affirm? All right, okay, all right. I move we ratify, affirm, and appoint. How about that? Mr. Turner, okay?
Any further discussion, motion made and seconded? Any further discussion?
Oh, my goodness.
Aye.
Close, standing, unanimous.
Any other business?
Thank you, Honorable Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Any other town business, not reasonable, be anticipated in forty-eight hours prior to the posting of this meeting.
There will be some additional meet, um, business at the end of the meeting, but I'm not going to do it now.
Mr. Slaven has something.
Yes, my dear.
Maybe the same thing you're talking about, I don't know. I just want to bring forward again the sewer commissioner's decision, which they've been talking about for a while. We were, for a while, we were proactive, trying to solve our sewer issues. We're now becoming reactive, which is always difficult to do. That plus, I'm sure everybody picked up on AD Makepeace doing their final DEP report on the B-Dot area and they basically have closed down, at least for now, any future economic development. That does nothing do with solar, but as far as industrial parks, seven hundred and seventeen homes, et cetera, they've shut it all down, which is, everybody understands that the long-term effect is it could be a huge economic loss for the Town of Wareham going forward into the future. So if you think we have some economic issues now, as everything grows and keeps moving along, we're stymied by basically two different things. One is the sewer issues and the other one is that Makepeace has decided to stop. And I think Mr. Buckland put out a statement of sixty million dollars in tax revenue losses in a short, in a period of time, plus some huge number overall for the actual economic effects of the Town of Wareham. I'm hoping next time something comes through that has long-term potential, we take it more seriously, look at it. Because now we're really searching what we're going to do in the long term. And I'll use that wonderful word of, we may be forced to really consider it over our people in the long term coming forward. It's a word that doesn't work well in the Town of Wareham as far as political statements to make, but at this point here, we may be looking at whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know how we go there because that would be liaison and initiative reports. So let's go to the Town Administrator's report.
Thanks, Steve.
I am passing over tonight, thank you very much.
Good for you.
Okay, now we will.
Now liaison report.
Now we will go to liaison and whatever initiatives report you just started, so keep going there, Mr. Slaven.
Okay, the bike path situation is getting better all the time. The New England Greenway has stepped up with the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, which we're a member of. And there's a possibility of funding which they're applying for right now as we speak. And we may be looking at going ahead and picking back up on, on Sidewalk where we had temporary bypass on the one, on east side of the road, it's like a white line, and actually making a formal bike path from there, all the way through somehow to Onset Village, back out, all the way down Onset Ave to Route Six, just before the bridge, to make the connections to the Bourne Bike Path, et cetera, which gives you to the canal, et cetera. Keep everybody apprised of how this is happening, this came up a couple of days ago.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Minis?
I'd like to speak to what Selectman Slaven said regarding the environmental impact report, the final one for, I think it was a TMUD program, a project?
Yeah, I think so.
For Makepeace? And that just closes out that. Doesn't mean they can't propose more developments on the property, but it just closes out the entire big package that they had pro- proposed X amount of years ago. And if there's seven hundred and something homes that were included in that, well, you know, oftentimes, housing costs towns money. So as they're doing solar, doesn't mean in twenty years they can't convert some of the full, solar fields into, into housing or have other areas. They're a long-range planning company and they're very careful in how they, how they, how they make their plans and how they look forward. So what we don't have, we couldn't count on, and it was just planned. So I hope we weren't counting on that money, to tell you the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, just, just getting back to the sewer thing. Yeah, the sewer commission's gonna, gonna have some, some tough decisions going forward. Nobody's going to like a board that comes up and says, hey, you need a hundred million bucks to do this, that, and the other thing. But that's the stone-cold truth of it, between what apparently now is going to be required upgrades to the plant in some fashion, amendments to the discharge permit, whether that comes through from the DEP and EPA, I don't know. Discussions about the canal outfall, this is all on the table now and they've got huge challenges. I said three or four years ago, that board going forward was the most important in town as far as the future development in town. And I, I hate to have been right, but unfortunately, they're stuck with that. Those aren't easy problems to solve. I would hope that we would have some kind of ability to get plans in and, and see what we can do to tap into some of this federal money that's been made, made available for infrastructure. That's what I would urge the, the sewer commission and the Water Pollution Control Facility Director and their engineer to do, is to start, start laying out the plans for all of these improvements. When the sewer first went into town in the late sixties, early seventies, you know, people were paying five hundred dollar betterments on what were like three thousand dollar actual betterments because the federal government had funding for them, so.
Ninety percent.
Yeah, by the time I came around, it was fifteen grand and Uncle Sam wasn't paying a nickel of it. Today, you're probably looking at, in excess of thirty grand. And that's a lot of money to put on someone. And that's, that's just to repair in some of these places. You know, the plant cost is, is above and beyond that, if you're going to up, upgrade the plant like we did twenty years ago. And so these, these are huge expenses. And I don't envy anybody who does it, but don't yell at the sewer commissioners because, you know, the simple fact of the matter is these things are going to have to be done and it's going to cost a ton of money.
Thank you, Mr. Tropiano.
All right, so I might as well say a little bit about that. So first off, as far as the commercial people go, you don't have to worry about them. And don't worry about the people with the houses either, because there's a thing called package treatment plants, okay? And there's a lot of them around. And there's companies that go around and maintain them and take care of them and whatever. So, you know, just the fact that we don't have any right now doesn't mean, it's all, not all doom and gloom. I know everybody seems to be doom and gloom about it, I don't think it's as big a deal as you think it is. Sure, it's better if you have a sewer line, it's better if they can tie to the sewer, all that stuff's better. But a lot of these places they go to build nowadays, in places like our community and others, because they're going into smaller and smaller communities along the way, don't have any of those facilities and they still build them. don't have any of those facilities, and they still build them. They still come. And the reason why they do is because of the thing called the package treatment plant. And there's lots of them around. And so I'm not so concerned about that. I wish that we had more capacity. But in saying that, I still think that our real deal, regardless of what the people in, in, that went to Bourne Town Meeting and said no, is that this outflow pipe needs to be pushed under the ground, gone out into the, into the canal where it flushes at eight miles an hour in both directions. And remember, it's clean water going in there, okay? Because it's already done at the plant. And we get a lot more outfall, we get a lot more capacity, and then we can take in more around us as well and really help the area in general. And if they don't do that, you know, this is kind of my lacerata, say anything about it, but if they, if they don't do that, they're going to hurt all the communities, not just us, everybody. They'll hurt everybody. But let's see what, what's going to happen. I know that they, they did, they have apparently come up with, was it one? They've gone halfway so far, they figured out halfway of the pipe, to get halfway to the canal? Isn't that what it was? I think Guy told me that. They go halfway to the canal so far, as far as the push underground?
They, they wanted a million dollars to get a twenty-five percent design review on that.
Twenty-five percent?
Yeah, design review, a hundred feet under.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's only, it's going to cost them, and there's not even a question about it. But, you know, it's going to cost one way or the other.
Yeah, the total project that the Coalition put together is one hundred and forty-two million dollars.
Yeah.
And we've actually applied through Congressman Keating for a federal grant.
Okay.
I put it through two weeks ago, again.
Well, that's a good thing. That's, that's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. If that pipe gets there, you're going to be fine.
I made the request.
And I, and I get, I don't understand.
Through the portal or you just email them?
No, I spoke in direct.
I, I don't understand why the people get so upset about water going into the canal. We could put it in the river where we are if we had, you know, better, better, what do you call it?
I'm judging to make the waterfall.
Yeah, the, the osmosis process and all that. And if we had the flushing that they have out there, it would be fine. You know what I mean? But we don't have the flushing. Because remember, we, we're one point, I think we're putting out like one point eight pots per million in nitrogen, which we have a four nitrogen permit, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that correct? We have a four nitrogen permit, and we've been putting out like one point eight in nitrogen. That's very small.
So you're able to put out double the gallons.
And if you flush it in, you know, into the thing, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't hurt a thing, you know? So anyway, so that's the name of that.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody that the, that we have posted on the town website, as well as in the newspaper, all of the positions that are open or that will be open as of June thirtieth of this year. So that I will use an individual who's sitting in the room. If your term expires on June thirtieth and your committee has recommended you to the Board of Selectmen for a reappointment, that is not an automatic reappointment. This board or whoever's sitting here will be making that decision and it won't be on the agenda until mid-June. Okay? And they are all whatever. Now, I need somebody to take pictures.
I'm terrible at taking pictures.
Matt, can you do it with my camera? Or can you do it with your camera? Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Now, some of you know, well, I did make a promise to Patrick. And he told me that he would murder me if I gave him a plaque. So it's not a plaque. It's a cup, and it says Survivor's Cup. Patrick G. Tropiano, Wareham Selectmen, two thousand and thirteen to twenty twenty-two. Now, I didn't have to make any such promise to Peter. So his Survivor's Cup says Peter W. Titlebaum Esquire, Wareham Selectmen, two thousand and thirteen to twenty twenty-two. And then, of course, we have.
You get a clap, too.
You're going to get the clap.
I do, but I was, but I do, but I was on in twenty twelve.
Yeah.
Madam Moderator, would you step forward, please?
That's right.
He had the one year thing.
I'm going to get by you. Okay, Madam Moderator, I didn't make any such promise to you. So we have here, in recognition of exceptional leadership and dedicated service to the Town of Wareham, Claire L. Smith. Town Moderator, twenty ten through the twenty twenty-two. You have survived some of the worst town meetings I've ever seen in my whole life.
And some of the best.
And some of the best.
Yeah, sure.
Now, here is a.
It's quite heavy.
I know, it looks weird. Claire L. Smith. On this day, May twenty twenty-two, on behalf of the Town of Wareham, we would like to offer our appreciation to Claire Smith for serving twelve years as our town moderator. Claire stepped forward to run for this position when town meeting needed a strong guiding hand. And during those years, we have experienced vast improvements in the legislative operations of our town. We could not be more grateful to Claire for acting as the Chair of the Appointing Authority, returning civility and decorum during controversy, maintaining calm in times of chaos, remaining polite when challenged, using her gavel only when needed, referring to town council when in doubt, allowing a fair amount of time for debate, using logic and clear language in her explanations of complex rulings, preparing sets of guidelines, making warrant articles easier to create, following always the Charter, Bylaws, Roberts Rules of Order, and the town meeting time, and handling town meetings successfully during the pandemic with caution and safety for all involved. And finally, for always having a smile and being pleasant to the town hall staff and administration and to town boards and the Board of Selectmen, of whom she often came into contact.
This thing was longer than.
So, Jim, and Ben, your toys, we're going to get a group picture, please, for your toys. Come on. Come on.
I did, yeah. That's just it. Also, Wareham, you get in with yours.
I can be in the front.
Be in the front.
That's short, tall people.
Yeah, we'll get the lead people in the front.
One of you on one side.
Who do you want in the back?
Claire.
I'm kind of a back guy, isn't I?
All right, you know, did you see how well the ladies on the cheerleaders?
Judy, you need to kneel down in front.
Yeah, I get to kneel down in front, no. Okay. These guys, turn your belly this way. Those got bags in.
It is a survival, boy. Survival.
I'll do like the kids right here. That's right, take the mask down for one second, let everybody see you.
Yeah, true. One, two, three.
Good job, Judy.
Oh, this is funny. She couldn't resist that, could you?
And if there's no further business to come before this committee, I will accept a motion. Not debatable, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, thank you. Claire, please don't leave, Peter don't leave, and Patrick don't leave.